All right, I'll call us in the session at 7:04. First thing, adjustments to the agenda. I don't have any, anything from you. The only thing we want to do is, at the end, we'll add an executive session. We already have it down on the agenda here, so I guess we're good. So no adjustments are needed. It's, uh, looks like a pretty good agenda this week, so let's see how we do with it. So, let's start with reports to the board. The principal's report was in your packet. Walter, is there anything you want to highlight out of it?
Are we going to do a presentation?
Whoa, I went right by him, and we're done with the presentation. See, I told you I was going for the record. I flew right past audience and communications, just to, you know. And I don't think we have any. Yeah, we're good. My apologies, Walter.
Carter is here to present on low incidence disabilities.
I think maybe we want to do that first. So, Carter, the floor is yours, which is probably a better thing than having it be mine right now.
Okay. There you go. I never know when I'm using my own computer. I have to be careful, you know, because when the screensaver goes to family pictures and like I think so, you know. I did be careful like that. Okay, I'm going to talk about supporting students with low incidence disabilities, and I'll help you with the definition of what low incidence disability is. Deborah, Deb Moody may have been one of the few people that knew what that meant. She's not here, so. I have, this should take about fifteen or twenty minutes, and then ten minutes for questions. That's the plan, and see how that goes. Okay, so there's all different ways to categorize students with disabilities, and some. This is one way of categorizing them. Another way would be categorical. So in the IDEA, in the law, we use categorical, so that you have different types of disabilities. There's intensity, so how much support is needed. You see, if you divide the kids' disabilities up by how much support is needed, and severity. And, you know, in our work, we use each of those types of categories. So today, I'm going to talk about the category of low incidence. And so that means simply that it doesn't occur very much. So high incidence disabilities occur more often in the population, and low incidence generally do not exceed 1% of the population. So high incidence would be like a learning disability, attention deficit disorder that happens quite often. But low incidence would be like blindness, deafness, multiple disabilities, autism.
Autism is in the low incidence.
Autism is a low incidence disability. In our setting, you know, the research role is 1% or less, but in our setting, we, our students with autism, on the autism spectrum, is 1.5%, so a little higher than what the standard definition would reveal. I think that a lot of this is how you define autism, how they're categorized. In Vermont, we have autism spectrum disorder, so some of the students that, some people use the term high functioning, or Asperger's, come under that category. So, anyway, they're all, those kids are all lumped together, and so it's, we, in Williston School District, we have sixteen students on the spectrum, which is a high number. Nationally, it's, I think they're using 1 in 110. So we have a higher percentage than that. So, anyway. I need Anna White over here.
I can drive for you.
You can? You think so? Yeah. Oh, that's good, because I need to go, but I'll worry about you. This, this just divides up the, this is the, this is how I'm interpreting the definition. Autism, deaf-blindness, intellectual disabilities, and severe orthopedic impairment. So, we counted the students on my case load. We would have sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one students. And you can see that out of the, out of our population, that one child, that's less than 1%. The two children, intellectual disability is, if you go back twenty years, it would be mental retardation. If you go back five years, it would be learning impairment. And they just recently changed the title on the Vermont regs to intellectual disability. I think that's a good descriptor for now.
Yeah.
So, and then orthopedic impairment. Okay, Anna? I'm just drawing your attention to this because we try to draw people's attention to this whenever we talk about instruction with students with disabilities. So this is our guiding principles. These are our guiding principles. I'm sure you're relatively familiar with them. And so it's collaboration, inclusive practice, expertise, you know, the quality of the people that are working with the children, using evidence-based instruction, using data to make our decisions. Tonight, I think I'm going to be, all these are applicable to students with intensive needs, low incidence disabilities. I'm going to focus on inclusive practices today. Okay, Anna? So this is, these are the guidelines from CSSU Guiding Principles for Intervention. I want to point out that classroom teachers continue to play a primary role in curricular planning through working with a special educator and related service providers such as occupational therapy and physical therapy. Classroom teachers play a primary role. Just because they have intensive needs doesn't mean the classroom teacher isn't involved on a regular basis or on an important basis. Students need to have access to the content using differentiation. So I'll explain that briefly. Differentiation, maybe you know this already, you know, is that the students are grouped differently, the work is differentiated, their work is changed, that everyone has sort of an individual, every child, whether they have a disability or not, is differentiated for, by the teacher. Universal design, that just, that means that the classroom is designed based on some of the neediest learners, and then you can build on that. That's a term from architecture, universal design, start the building so people with wheelchairs can use it, and then everybody can use it. What I'm going to talk some more about later is these concepts of multi-level instruction and curriculum overlapping. So let's get to it. Multi-level instruction, I'll talk about first. All learning outcomes are within the same curriculum. So I'll give you an example. They're studying the Civil War, and it's, everybody is using the Civil War curriculum only. The student with special needs might be identifying the names and matching them to the faces of the generals of the North and the South. And other students might be explaining their reason for the war. Was it industrial versus agriculture? What was the reason for the war? So, you know, they're still studying the Civil War, but it's a different set of outcomes. Okay, next. A little bit deeper would be curriculum overlapping. Some people call it curriculum overlay, but you take the student's plan, student's IEP, student's goals, and you overlap or overlay them on top of the curriculum that all the kids are getting. So student, usually this involves two or more subject areas. So the student might be, might be learning science, communication, and social skills. The example I'll use here is human organ function. Students in this science class are assembling and disassembling a model of the human heart. And a student with low incidence disability might participate, taking turns, responding to a question, using a communication device. Okay. So, a lot of work, really. It's, it's, it takes a lot of creative thought and collaboration between the special educators, the related arts providers, the related services providers, like occupational therapists, therapists, the speech language pathologists, to include persons with low incidence in a meaningful way, in not just their schools, but, you know, after years. And we, our focus is always on gaining increased independence. Never take that out of the discussion. So, let me show a video. See if you can do that, Cindy, but this video is from a high school graduation in Ohio. I went to school in Ohio, and so I recognize the Otterbyne University, small liberal arts school. But this is a child with a low incidence disability, and this is her graduation speech. Wow, good job. Hit that, and then see what the, I might have to just use the volume from my computer.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. I did. We had a very good teacher. It, the first one was a queen, queen reflect. A class, and business, and funny everywhere. We were meeting in our group, and we discovered, and what we were full of, what I could do. I looked at a lot of shake there, and seen them, and quiet, and through all the club. And we did good stuff, as my courage, Richard Bummitt, a winner about giving culture, and me, I learned, because I, sometimes, we need help from other men or girls. And sometimes, we, we, okay, up there. He didn't say, oh, what do I pay for? We know that something's hard for us. We had to stay in front, and we had to be hard time and be organized. But we have, once we learn, the capital, we start. And what, of our favorite, the, the task, see. I want to do things, I think about, but that's dark and forward, perhaps, our back, or bow, or back. But what, what more they, they have, much more, much more, much more. The original, eternal life.
More than keeping house. Okay, you can just, there you go. You're good. Okay. Wow, I didn't know you were so skilled. I would have had you do this more often. So there's a couple of things that we are implementing now. We call them, the two things are inclusion grid, and there are other documents that are connected to the inclusion grid. I'll explain that to you, and then I'll have Cindy click on them later and just give you a visual about what they look like. So the inclusion grid aligns out what the classroom activities are. So we start there, and the classroom teachers talk, say, this is what all the children are doing. And then we take the plan for the child, the individual educational plan, and the goals and like, like the example, it could be social goals, could be taking turns, could be sorting, you know, that kind of thing, and we'll see where they would overlay or overlap onto the, what the classroom is doing. And so we're, and then we rate, okay, so we use a code, like S is the same, so the child can function at the same level, do the same activities. Or, you know, we might say this is a multi-level or a curriculum, or, so people get to, get to understand those terms, and we're getting those down. And then there's a section on the, on the grid that talks about how is the student going to gain greater independence instead of being stuck where they are? How are we going to fade prompts, you know, have the adults back away from them if there is a note working with them, those kinds of things? How are we going to, will the child be more independent? So always a discussion about that. But, so Cindy, let's just, oh, there's the grid. Okay, so here's where, is the participation the same? Is it multi-level? Is there curriculum overlap? How many actions are needed? Who's going to do it? How are we going to monitor the progress? And how are we going to get them to be more independent? Okay, and then the other, the inclusion document is just, describes how to use that. Here's the same multi-level curriculum overlap. Okay.
So Carter, who's the team that builds this grid for students? Is it, like, their main, their primary teacher, their, you know, your staff, you? Is it like a team, or is it?
It is a team, yeah. It's a team, it's, classroom teacher is involved. The special case manager has, has a leadership there, depends on who's, you know, case managing the child, so you get to them. And it often would be a related service provider, like an occupational therapist, if it's, if that's an issue for the kid. For many, if not all, of these kids, sensory or fine motor is an issue. So, yeah, so it's, that's the team. It depends on the child, but usually it would be a classroom teacher, a special educator, and a service provider.
Because I assume at some point it comes down to the classroom teacher to take this information to help build those overlays, you know, with his or her curriculum, right?
Yeah. Yeah. A skillful classroom teacher with the mindset is fantastic. We have, we have many of those. We're working to get them all with the mindset, but, you know, like I said, it's, we have work to do. Okay. So this is some of the needs that these, what I say 21 students have, and some of the services, and I'm using that interchangeably. So three of the students use wheelchairs. It might be five total, but I'm only talking about the students with, who are identified. We have some students that use wheelchairs that don't have academic needs, so I'm not listing them here. Personal care, that would be, that would be feeding, toileting, mostly. Visual awareness, VAB, this Vermont Association of Blind helps us with kids that, we have a number of students with cortical impairments, so, you know, that impacts their vision. Occupational therapy, like I said, almost all of the kids get some sort of support, either direct support or more often consultation on occupational therapy. We have a fitness group, and five students are involved with that, and our physical therapist helps set that up. We call that adaptive PE, but, you know, these are students that, well, anyway, that's, it's a fitness group for students with low incidence disabilities. Physical therapy, thirteen of them get that service. Community skills is a program that's centered at CDU, and it's for older kids, and so they help, it's a fantastic program, we're lucky to have it here. They help students learn job skills, you know, in seventh and eighth grade. Job skills and, and other community skills. So music therapy, that's, we only have one child there that does musical, music therapy. There are a number at CDU that do that. That's, Cindy? Lost you, lost me.
I came back on my screen.
Okay. Aquatic therapy is for, we have two students still, like, if we had a poll in the school, maybe in the next budget cycle, then we, we wouldn't have to send them out. But these are, we have two students who are non-ambulatory, and this is the way they, we haven't figured out a better way for them to keep their muscles from atrophying. Transportation, there are two students only that get, cannot be transported on the regular bus for a number of reasons, but mostly wheelchair. We do have some buses with wheelchairs now. And then communication device, you probably have heard me talk about how we went from very expensive communication devices that didn't have a high cool quotient to iPads. And so, you know, we, we have a number of students that would have, five years ago, four years ago, used very expensive, hard to program, nobody really understood except a couple people. We still have two of those, because, you know, iPad doesn't do everything. So that gives you an idea. There's more, but I just wanted to list some of the things that we do. And again, it's a work in progress, placing a child in a classroom without connection to the classroom curriculum, and the child's IEPs is not appropriate, and it's not a quotient. We, you know, that's, we used to do, they'd just throw them in for the class, and so we'd say, okay, this kid's included. Well, they're not really. And, you know, we, you know, so we're, we've woken up, everybody has, and we're, we need to make sure that there is a connection between the child's plan and what's happening in the classroom. And we know we can do that, and it's just, it's, it takes work and collaboration and time. Vermont does better than national average for low incidence disabilities. So, let's see. This is, students included in a regular classroom most of the time, and I think I'm using 80% as most of the time. So with intellectual disabilities, that's, you know, I think we have a couple of those students that are identified in that way. 23% of the students are included most of the time, and a national average is 13%. With autism, it's about the same, 36 and 37. Overall, Vermont ranks, this is for all the students with disabilities, Vermont ranks fifth at 73%. Now, I don't know how Alabama beats us, but that's what the data say. This is Nebraska. I don't know, must be such a big place that they can't form, you know, those outside placements. That's why Vermont, I mean, Vermont has mindset also, but originally, 30 years ago, Vermont was really good with inclusion because we didn't have the number of students to throw together in institutions. So they were forced to work with them the way they should be worked with in the local schools.
Institutions closed.
And institutions closed, right. Okay, so there you go. Hawaii is the worst. Go figure. I don't know, I'll have to find out why that is. But anyway, USA average, I think I said, was 61%. Michael Jean-Groco, I wrote an article for this week's bell, if you have a chance to look at it, it's really about this, partly about Michael Jean-Groco, who is a professor at UVM, and I've worked with him on some research projects, and we're working on some projects now. But he said I could, he would be happy to share this. So he collects these cartoons, and he sells them, and I think he has maybe six cartoon books now. He sells them and donates money to charity. So, "Could you please shovel the ramp?" All these things in his five books actually happened, you know, they're reported to him, so, or he witnessed them. "Could you please shovel the ramp?" And the janitor, let's say, says, "All the other kids are waiting to use the stairs. When I get through shoveling them off, then I'll clear the ramp for you." And the child says, "But if you shovel the ramp, we can all get in." Clearing a path for people with special needs clears the path for everyone. Thanks for taking the time.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
You made a comment that indicated it really takes a special mindset for, for a teacher to balance all the competing needs. And I was just curious about placement decisions, and, you know, we're fortunate that there isn't just one teacher for each grade level, we have multiple. Is, is there anything you can share with us about how placement decisions are made?
Generally, they're made, you know, out of feeling of equity, you know, they make sure that not one teacher gets overburdened. We, we want to be careful that because a teacher is effective, that they don't get punished for that. So, but all our, all our teachers are good. I just, I could point out a number that you probably don't really need the special educator at that meeting. They know how to incorporate the child's IEP into the, into their program, so. And, you know, for some of, for many of the teachers, it's natural. I think that it's more natural at the younger grades because they're used to differentiating. They do that from day one, and I think it's more of a, of a mindset change for some of the content area people because they, they're, it's not, you know, it's, and I, I get where they're coming from, their content, they're married to their content. And so we need to take their content and fit something else into it. And I, just, this is nationally, it gets more of a challenge, the older the kids do, it's more of a challenge in high school because of the discrepancy between content and these, the kids with low incidence disabilities. Good question.
Does the definition of low incidence disability, is that also parallel with the amount of disability they have? Autism has a huge spectrum, you know?
Yeah.
Is it, is it classifying, like, is, is that right?
You're right. And I think that if we were, you know, if we were using the category of intensity, the numbers might be a little bit different. And in some ways, the students with emotional disabilities are pretty intense. I mean, their, their level of service is intense. You know, I was asked to talk about low incidence disabilities, so I think you're right that this, as you said, that autism spectrum is a spectrum, it's a wide spectrum, and so there's a, there is pervasive developmental delay on one end, and then Asperger's on another end, so we have six.
They get lumped together?
They get lumped together in the law.
In the law? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh-huh. But you do have to look.
Does it affect our funding anyway, where they're lumped, or where they're put in, or we get somewhere funding from?
Let's see, students with, well, this, this is kind of a budget topic, but I'll, I'll do, I'll give you a little bit of time on it. It's, students on one end of the spectrum get less support because they can be more independent, and so they're less expensive, so we get less funding?
Yeah.
So that's the best way I can explain it, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How do you do on time, Walter?
Pretty good. It's just about right on time.
Okay. So, 5.0, reports to the board.
So, five point O reports to the board.
I think we're back on track, right?
Yeah.
So the only, uh, I think the, what Elaine was mentioning is something we just found out about that says that Williston is, Williston has been identified as one of the, the, uh, five out of all these schools that are in corrective action year five. We're one of the, we're third in the state of closing the achievement gap between SES students and regular education students.
Very impressive.
So, I mean, I think that's, really shows all the work that's been going into it. And you always wonder sometimes, like, you know, change isn't overnight. You know, it takes time to ripple through the system, literally.
Yeah, it's been years, years in the making.
And this has been, been worked on for a while and, and for the first time, we're really beginning to see that there is a change and it's happening. And I think the one thing we saw in our science scores for a fourth grade, just the SES, they're only five points behind the regular education students. That's amazing.
And every, you know, every school that has thirty students in poverty is identified. So that's hundreds and hundreds of schools, so if we're talking about the top five.
Yeah, third best.
That's really impressive.
Well, kudos to the administration and the faculty.
Absolutely.
I'd say they're really doing a good job.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
So that, that would be what I would add.
Okay.
I can tell you that the French, uh, the Spanish letters went out.
Oh, yes.
So now we're waiting for a response, you know, to see, uh, how many parents make that selection. We sent it out to everybody.
Okay.
Say, here's an option. So we'll, we'll let you know as soon as we hear some numbers.
Can you clue me in there? Yeah, 'cause I wasn't in that meeting.
Yeah. Um, so we voted to, um, uh, increase a small amount of, um, FTE to ten or a few thousand dollars so that we could offer, uh, Spanish class after school.
After school, okay.
Yeah, and so the letters have gone out to parents, asking them to volunteer their children to work after school in that class.
And that's because of high numbers, which is, we're at ninety-five percent of our students who are taking part in fifth grade world languages, ninety-five percent.
I am very happy about that. That just confirms that it was the right decision, that's right.
When do we extend it to third and fourth?
Exactly. Exactly.
Yeah. Keep working on that extended date.
Yeah.
Good. So, uh, uh, next item on our agenda, if you, unless you have anything else that's a contribute, is this, a debrief from the CSSU meeting. Uh, let's see, I did write a couple of things down here, I don't think I got much. Josh, help me out.
So the first issue is, um, making decisions about whether we're all in on the services that we can procure from the SU.
Yes.
Uh, they have us down for taking advantage of all their offerings.
Right. And so, yeah, so we'll be talking about that in discussion matters for the purchase services.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And then, um-
It rings in.
Uh, one issue that the SU is going to address is whether parades should be hired at the SU level or at the local level. The administration is recommending that the status quo remain where, uh, we all hire our own, uh, to maximize, if I got this correctly, uh, the flexibility in how parades can be utilized and-
In their system, right.
In the system.
Excellent.
And then, um, the common topic, as you all heard, I, um, I just thought was interesting, there may be grants available to start thinking about coordinated school health curriculum or planning. I, so I thought that'd be interesting to explore. If it doesn't significantly cost us anything because of available grant dollars, maybe that's something we should be thinking about at some point.
Yeah. And I think the only other thing that I have to add is that the other discussion matter that was brought up was the substitute teacher pay we discussed last month. And for the time being, there's no plan and change, well, there may be a plan and change, but for the time being, there is no change to-
For the school.
Yeah, to the current.
It wasn't as simple as changing the rate of pay.
Yeah, right. Right. Um, and that the, uh, there was one action matter and it was to award the audit contract for, um, the, the audit company that we use, uh, district-wide and, uh, SCSSU-wide. And that was, um, after some discussion, it was decided to award that to a, a new company, a new bidder, so that there's some fresh eyes on the subject, so that's going to be done. And I don't think there was anything else, CSSU-specific. Okay. Um, great, so that brings us, uh, to section six point O, discussion matters. So the first one are SU purchase services, which is, uh, I don't think we have any paper handouts here, it was in your takeouts. Let me see if I can pull the packet. So it comes down to really, as you go through all the pack, all the packet, this is, this is our time to tell the supervisory union if we do not expect to take advantage of any of their services that they offer.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and at this current time, we take advantage of all of them. So if, if we, if there was one in particular or any particular reason that we need, we, we felt it was important to break away and do it ourselves, this would be the time for us to discuss that and take action and, and inform. I don't particularly see a need to. We have discussed in the past, um, you know, taking a look at transportation costs, it's, you know, next to salary, one of the largest costs we have. You know, we've questioned, not necessarily the cost as we're being, it's been given to us, but the fact that it really hasn't been looked at in a while. And so maybe there are some places where it could be optimized, maybe not. It's something that came up in last year's discussions and it's always one of these things where, you know, in order to do that effort, it, you know, we need to identify that we want to do that, we would have to go off and do some due diligence on our own, we would have to have an expectation of the supervisory union to come back to us with some information. And to my knowledge, none of that ever really caught traction last year. So I bring it up only in, in historical reference and, you know, if anybody feels strongly about that particularly, I think we need to, as a board, make a stronger effort to do something about it. But again, it wouldn't be for this budget year. It would have to be something that we start working on now and look at and consider for the next budget year. So, you know, I, I, I have, I don't know if I have mixed feelings about it, but it's just a, it's just a, if we feel it's important, I think we need to, uh, plan time to work on that issue and, and-
Yeah, and that's a-
You know, and, and make that expectation to, you know, the COLT too, so they can work with us.
Yeah. At the SU board, you chose to study food service last year.
That's right.
That would be a similar thing you could propose, uh, instead of taking it on yourselves.
No, I think that's a good-
You could propose that conversation for at the SU level.
Yeah.
Not that it limits you, but-
Do we have any idea if the other school boards have interest in looking into this?
I think if we, if we discussed it, I think, I think we could, I think we could gain interest. I think it's there.
It's certainly a large enough percentage of your budgets that there would at least be that financial oversight. It's not bad to review our program, slant, whether you stay or don't.
So, um, it, it, I guess at this point, is there anyone who has any concerns about any specific service that's being delivered to us from the supervisory union that we would want to call out? We're talking about IT, the CY program, food, transportation? I don't even know what, what does FIT stand for? PSYOT, ELL, and ELP? I have to go back to the thing, hold on, I'll find it. Other language learners?
FIT is Children's Integrated Services-
Oh, that's-
And Early Intervention.
That's, yes.
And, and an earlier term of art.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, I guess the discussion has been had and there's no interest to pull any, pull away from any of the services currently offered?
No.
Okay, let's move on.
Can I just say something, sir?
Sure.
Before we move on? On the transportation, uh, portion though, I do remember that in the past we talked, I think a few meetings ago, we talked about just reviewing the current transportation procedure, I guess, to try to save on, um, gas usage. Because the way the buses work right now is they stop literally every three houses. And we had talked about exploring, um, a, a new procedure where they would stop in a corner, but not at every house.
And we did that. Seriously, it's in place now. What we have to watch out for is what do we promise triple E parents and what do we promise kindergarten parents? Because you can't drop a kindergarten student off three houses down from where they live and not be able to tell if anybody's at their house. But in every way we can, we have tried to consolidate the stops.
Okay.
And we've had some pushback on that, just so you know that. You know, we tried to go fewer in neighborhoods. Now, may not look it, but we did. And we had some questions that come up around, um, students with disabilities on some areas, saying that, I don't know if it's reasonable that they walk this and we've had to move some stops around, but we have tried to do that.
Okay. But the policy is kindergartners are the only ones that get dropped off in front of us.
I think, I think especially, um, taking them home, because you don't want to leave them in the middle of the winter. I mean, you've got to be where you can see something because they're too young to leave any other way. And I think that's kind of what we looked at and said, wait a minute, we've got a, we have to do due diligence here, especially at certain times in the year. And they're the ones that are most likely to have difficulty if anybody does.
Yeah.
So we've also looked at that and, and kind of cross-referenced, so we have been working on it. And said, wait a minute, what have we promised here and what's the safety issues around it?
All right. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we did not forget that.
Good.
Thank you.
I'm going to head out, unless you, you don't need me to do it?
No, it's great, thank you for-
You don't want to stay for everything?
I'm happy to stay if you need me.
No, you're fine.
We've got Pirates on TV at eight o'clock. It's perfect.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Should be a good football game.
Good evening, guys.
Good night.
You too, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, so, uh, next on discussion matters is enrollment projections and sustainability. Do you have, uh, anything to share with us on that?
I'll just tell you a little bit, you can, you can see what is happening, why this is, you can kind of, so if you look at fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade numbers, fifth grade, our biggest class, a hundred and thirty-nine. Sixth grade, a hundred and twenty-five. Seventh grade, a hundred and twenty-one. Eighth grade, a hundred and twenty-one. Then if you go down to the lower grades, first, second, third, fourth, first grade, a hundred and sixteen. Second grade, a hundred and nine. Third grade, a hundred and six. Fourth grade, a hundred and eight. So you can see there's quite a difference. Kindergarten this year, eighty-four.
Really?
Is the lowest class we've ever seen.
There's no, there weren't a lot of St. George students for some reason in there. There were very few St. George-
They're always very few.
In kindergarten, but then in first grade, there were like twelve. So I don't know why, is that, do they part, not part of the contract or?
Oh, they totally are.
Kindergarten, yeah, they are.
It's the population.
So for some reason, there was an anomaly this year in kindergarten. And I think when we see Bill Smith's numbers, I think we'll see that, because I looked at what we see projecting, like, out and the birth rate and things like that, I think we're going to see it go up to a certain amount, but it may not hit a hundred. And that's impacting, when we're graduating, a hundred and twenty-one, but only eighty, well, we graduated last year, over a hundred and thirty students. And only eighty-four entered the system. That's a huge discrepancy.
Right, it'll be interesting if we get two years back to back with that kind of-
Yeah, and it's, you know-
Because then clearly staffing has to be adjusted to-
Well, and, and that's what it says, we have to adjust staffing. We, we cannot just, um, keep the same number of teachers if we don't, if we have fewer kids. So that'll probably be part of the discussion in the budget process this year, coming up, to say, what does class size look like? We know we have a blip in, which will be in sixth grade next year, so how do we handle that? But at the same time, we have a very small class beginning to come through. And what does that look like as we try to adjust for it?
Right, and it may not be as simple as just reallocating resources because you have licensing and things like that, I'm sure.
Yeah, I think if it, we're looking at the elementary school and we look at, um, people retiring, things like that. We've been fortunate that we've used retirement as a way to solve some of the problems.
As attrition, yeah.
And we know that we can drop a house down to three teachers pretty easily and balance it out. If we have to, we know that, because we've already worked out models.
Okay. Is that eighty, is the kindergarten number pretty consistent, what's going to happen in first and second, or just because, you know, I don't know, it just seems like kindergarten?
We'll see. I think what usually happens is when, um, if we didn't offer full-day kindergarten-
Yeah, well, it more of a-
You would have a, this, there would be a lot of kids out in private kindergarten.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, you'd get this blip in first grade where all of them came back into the system. But we've had full-day kindergarten, so-
It's probably a good indicator.
It may be that that's going to stay about where it is. You know, and go up and down a little bit, but I don't think we're going to see a lot more students coming in. So that's going to be part of the discussion about, so what do we want to do about that as far as adjusting, especially if we have maybe teachers retiring?
Mm-hmm.
And so there's automatic openings created.
Well, not to mention our revenue from the statewide grant-
That's right.
-will be down significantly, so we really have to.
It's the average over two years, so, but that's going to buffer it a little bit, but it went down last year too.
Yeah.
And that hurt us.
Okay.
So that's what we have to watch.
Fun twist to the discussion. Um, okay, uh, six, three, budget forum preparation. So I think the, uh, if I recall, how do we, how do we do this? We do, do we do a public forum first to take input?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and then we also, the other thing we need to do as we prepare for that is start thinking about reaching out into the community for budget buddies too.
Right.
Because it's been, it's been a tradition and I think a really good one, that we each all try and go out and find someone to sit with us from the community as we go through the process. So we can get, um, you know, a broader sense of input and opinion from more people than just ourselves. Um, and that's been, it can be challenging to find people to do that, but I think it really, uh, brings a great perspective to the process. So do we need to set a date for our budget forum? Is that what we need to do at this point?
Yes.
For preparation?
I thought I was already done.
We may have, I'm just touching-
I'm thinking that you have. Let me see if I can-
Let me see if it's actually down at the-
I'm thinking I've got it in my calendar.
Uh, we don't have it in our confirmed next meeting dates. And-
What month does it normally happen in?
In October, uh, yeah, October, soon after this meeting usually.
Oh.
So let me see. I have, oh, I see, it's on the twenty-second, I have WSD staff budget forum. Do you have that, Walter?
I don't have my, I don't have my calendar for that with me right now.
And I have WSD community budget forum on that same date. So I have it on the twenty-second, four fifteen for the staff forum and six o'clock for the community forum. And I will just point out, the reason I knew this is because it conflicts with our negotiations meeting. So that's why I had seen it a couple times.
That's the twenty-second?
Yes.
Yeah, that's-
It doesn't have to be on that date, I'm just saying that's where it had been slotted in, you-
Should we move it down to the twenty-third, because?
Well, there's a couple of things going on there. Uh, I was going to bring this up in, in comments, but the, the FAP is sponsoring, working with you guys, Walter, right, the Community Potluck and Learning Expo, and that's on the twenty-fourth, Thursday, the twenty-fourth. That's going to be a big, hopefully a big turnout of parents. Now, I'm not suggesting we jump in or out of that, I don't know how logistics will work because there's a lot of things being planned there. However-
It's an opportunity.
It's an opportunity. I, I was, I was gonna bring it up outside of this conversation. Well, I was gonna bring it up outside of this conversation that this was a, this was really a large community forum that's being planned with a lot of great information that's gonna be given out to parents, kind of in an expo format with a potluck beforehand.
What time is that set up?
If that's, I have it here, it's, uh, seven, it's six o'clock to eight o'clock. Six to seven is potluck and then there's two sessions set up between seven and seven-thirty and seven-thirty and eight, give or take. Uh, with some, with some topics. It's actually in the bell this week with all the information. And, um, so I was gonna suggest at the very least that, that a number of us, if we can, you know, go and participate in. You know, I was gonna also suggest it'd be a great place to start asking people if they're interested in being budget buddies now. Walter, I don't know, is it something that, I don't know how we find time in that day to do a budget forum in the middle of it all? Or do we kind of change up what we do? Do we make it? Do we, do we have our own booth, so to speak, there? And just let people come up and just talk with them?
Maybe do some chalk talk kinds of things.
Because.
You've got a couple easels.
Let's just be honest.
People can like write their ideas down and.
Last year, we got two or three people show up and that was amazing.
You would get, you would get more traffic in esp- if you did a chalk talk where people could write notes and then comment about other people's comments.
I think it's a great idea. So if you guys like that idea and if Walter thinks that, that it can be accommodated, I mean, should I reach out to FAP and talk to them too or?
I'm, I'm seeing him tomorrow. And we're kind of reviewing everything we've put up so far, you know, from the faculty to say what, because there's a lot more on than what was suggested. Because the faculty have actually come forward and said, why, why didn't you ask me?
Oh, wow.
So we have more programs even than what it shows. But I think it's a great opportunity to have you there just to listen to people and, and I think putting out, I think before you've asked some questions and just putting them up and say, you know, here's what we want to hear from you.
Yeah, that's what we usually try to do.
Yeah.
Do that and just try and do it kind of on a ongoing one-on-one, two or three-on-one if we can as people come by.
So this would be in place, in replacement of?
The community forum.
I think, I think it's a great idea so long as we clearly communicate that that is exactly what we're doing.
Because what we need to do is we need to put that invitation out to the community and make sure that they understand they can come.
Yes.
Join the potluck and learn about everything the school's doing and also hear about the budget.
Right.
I think, I think it's really a good idea.
Okay.
I do, I think that.
Would you like me to show up? Should I show up tomorrow? Is it FAP? It's a regular FAP meeting?
So would you still do the, um, staff budget forum?
Ooh.
Have you, because you've.
Yeah, we usually do that in the afternoon and then we do it in, well.
So now that's on the twenty-second right now. And that one wouldn't be in conflict with negotiations.
Usually have a meeting with staff and get their input. And then on the same day, we then have a meeting early in the evening to get community input.
Now, last year though, didn't we do the breakfast where we supplied, um, bagels and things like that and there were people at both schools?
And they, yeah, we had, we had walk-ins from staff come in, grab a bagel.
We had easels to, so that everybody had an easel and people sat down and, and wrote down what the staff said, so we collected all the information. We had a different format and I think it was a chance for them, uh, to come in and, and, you know, kind of mingle and, uh, you know, it was more informal, but I think that it's still.
Yeah, we had one or two of us at each school.
Yeah.
Yeah, I went to, I went to Olkswold Central School. They didn't ask many questions though.
No, you weren't in the school board yet.
Why was I there?
You were for the appreciation, teacher appreciation day.
So, okay, if we do that, do we, should we do that on that same day or is that gonna be, is that gonna give anybody any issues with time and schedule? Probably should just go.
It'll make a long day for some of them because they're gonna be there until.
Well, what could do, I don't think it has to be the same day.
No.
We can do it.
I think it's because some of them gotta be there till, uh, you know, seven, eight o'clock at night.
Yeah.
Wait, I'm getting confused, the same day when?
The twenty-fourth.
In the morning?
Well, we're not, no, what I'm, what we're saying is we shouldn't do it the same day because a lot of teachers are gonna be there for a very long day.
Yes.
So, um.
What about the twenty-second, but in the morning?
Leave it in the, in the morning and the twenty-second.
That's fine, I, I probably will not participate just given the commitments at the end of the day.
I can't do the twenty-second in the morning.
What's a good date that week? Um, my mornings are open because I work mostly West Coast time, so. Getting me there is a problem, but that's a whole nother.
I can do any morning except, um, Wednesdays.
Twenty-second's out, Wednesdays are out, twenty-fourth of that isn't good. Well, look.
What about Friday?
We could do, we could do, we could do Friday, Friday the twenty-fifth.
And it's a nice way to close the week, right? Bagels.
But they, you know, remember the people have been out on the night before, right, the twenty-fourth?
Oh goodness, yes.
And so they will, you know, to be out that night and want to come in early, I don't know if that, that's gonna work that well.
How about that Monday?
Monday the twenty-eighth or Tuesday the twenty-ninth, I think, we pick one of those two days and do it.
I would say the twenty-ninth. I mean, we can check the calendar, but, um, the twenty-ninth is, you know, it's, the week has started and people have a chance to, we can remind them again that remember tomorrow morning, et cetera, et cetera.
I'll be out of town.
So.
Don't.
At, at minimum, I, I just want, at minimum, one person at a school to represent us and, you know, talk to them and get their input. So I can do the twenty-ninth, the twenty-ninth, are you good on the twenty-ninth?
I am.
Twenty-ninth a possibility?
That, nah, I'm not scheduled that far. I mean, I'm scheduled that far out, but I don't have it, uh, with me right now.
Gotcha.
So, um, it's maybe, it's a maybe for me.
And, and I would think, you know, Deb's a big maybe too, so we just have to.
Fifty-fifty.
Yeah, okay. Well.
For twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
So. In the morning?
In the morning.
Like eight or seven-thirty or something?
What time do they start by eight, right? We should, we should do like seven-thirty and have bagels.
No later than seven-thirty, we should have everything ready to go.
Yep.
So to eight or nine or whatever, it's, yeah, okay.
Well, they normally leave like around eight, right? Because they have to start their day.
One school is later than the other, we'll, I'll have to go back and look at the times, I'll email to you, they have to stagger slightly. Because, uh, ABS starts earlier.
Right.
Because.
You know, how about, we'll pick up bagels and bring them? Okay, so I'll email with you guys about logistics around that, it's no big deal. Uh, great, okay.
And then we confirm the twenty-second for FAP?
Tw- the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, and we'll, we'll close that with them tomorrow morning, but that's our intention.
And this would be six to eight?
It is six to eight, and that's what it's scheduled to be.
Is that gonna be here or?
No, that'll be.
St. Willis.
Central School.
Yeah, the central school.
A couple different locations, they're still in the planning process, but I mean, we definitely have a lot of people pre-sighted, no question about that.
Okay, great. Yeah, so I, uh, I covered budget buddies, it was on our Discussion Matters, so.
That's a great place to recruit.
I think that's a great place to recruit.
Right, because these are people that are gonna be interested.
Yeah, we're gonna, it's better than we've ever done. So, everybody go fishing. Uh, the only thing we have under here for Discussion Matters that we haven't discussed already is, uh, Board's Corner and actually, I don't know where we were at with that.
So, uh, well, the girl was writing the Board's Corner, she didn't, by the time she got to it, it was old news. So yesterday, you heard this over the phone, I think, right?
Sort of.
At the end of the meeting, we, the whole group helped her with, okay, here are the things you can write about. So she is going to be putting something together, she is gonna distribute to all the board chairs that you can then submit.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was thinking that on this one though, it would be a, um, a personal invitation to all community members to come in and learn about.
Oh, yeah, we should get that out.
And that can come back to the board.
On this twenty-fourth.
Because all the programs are gonna be reviewed, I mean, there's a place we can go ask questions, it's a potluck, it's a community, community builder, and all community members are welcome.
I'm happy to put something together, but I, I just, you need to clue me in on the FAP part because.
So here's what we'll do, we'll go, I'll, I'll, I'll go to the FAP meeting in the morning and let, well, you know, you know, let people ask questions about what we're gonna do if they need to or whatever and gain, help Walter gain their support. And then if that all comes through as expected, I'll email everybody and give you the details. You can put something together and send it out.
For Tuesday, right?
Yeah, for next Tuesday, which is good timing.
All right.
Great.
And we need to make sure we, we put the budget forum portion on the school bell. Because right now, the school.
Right, 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 I'll have to go out next week. Yep.
But no budget for mentioned.
Yep, we're gonna have to play a little catch-up on communications, but, yep, so noted. Okay. Good. Seven point oh, Action Matters, seven dot one, none.
Saw that.
Yes. Uh, section eight, Consent Agenda, uh, is in your packet, it was, it's the minutes from, uh, our special meeting last week and the business meeting of the month prior. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Kind of leaves you. Um, any discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, consent agenda is passed. Section nine, Director's Comments. As always, not a discussion, but a chance to speak up. Anyone?
I, I, I have one.
Yep.
I just wanna talk a little bit precisely about class size because I am a little concerned. Um, I mean, this class size of fifth grade having a hundred and thirty-nine kids, right? It's our largest class size of, of the entire K through eighth. And, um, it has not been a surprise, we've known about this for a long time. And I feel like this year, we've been caught by surprise a little bit for a couple of things that we've had to get caught up on. And I don't think, um, I think, I just wanna make sure that we have proper planning for years to come. Because this will continue for four more years. And then what concerns me a little bit is, you know, we have kindergarten with eighty-four students, which is the smallest class as you were just mentioning. And, and I just wonder, so we, we have, uh, there's a lot of stress being put in teachers in the fifth grade right now to be able to cope with this amount of kids and really offer these kids the, the attention that they require. So I just wonder, like, so why would we not? And this is gonna be a radical comment, but I just offer it, you guys are the experts. Why would we not rearrange the staff to libi- to add a teacher where it's needed and increase the number of teacher, I mean, this is very simplistic for me to say, clearly I don't understand, um, but just to throw the idea, why, why would we not add a teacher in fifth grade to shorten the, the, the size of the classes without really impacting kindergarten all that much? It's a pretty, I mean, I think the average of kids per class in kindergarten is thirteen kids, which is phenomenal for them, but meanwhile, we have classes of thirty kids in fifth grade. So things just don't seem to balance in my head and I think it behooves us to really think about that right now. And even maybe potentially to do the change like right now, this year. And, and I know it's, it's very simple for me to say it, but I just do really believe that we should have that flexibility.
So what it would mean, the biggest stumbling block, we'd have to move kids right now. We'd have to shift the classes around and redistribute the fifth grade kids and create another class.
And why would we not do that?
Because the parents are gonna be up in arms no matter what the class size is.
Well.
It's okay until it's their child that's being moved.
Right.
That's the problem.
I, I get that, but why would we not, I mean, if you ask me?
And kindergarten would also be redistributed if you took a.
Right, the same thing.
Still.
Plus concurrently, we can't change people after a certain date.
Okay, so why, so then why would we not have thought about that before?
I don't think, I think what we were looking at truthfully, we were looking at the three-four size with the, the, that one big class moving up. And what we were concentrating on at that time was saving money because the budget was high and what was on the table at that time was cutting a three-four teacher. That's what we were talking about. What we, because the budget was high, the percent was high, we wanted to lower it. What we didn't look at is sliding the three-four teacher off, that's what we could have done, and had to follow that class. But we, you know, we decided not to change anything at that time. And it's, truthfully, it's not unusual that, you know, what happened is this class, which was about a hundred and thirty-seven at the time we were talking about it, grew until it was over one forty and now it's shrunk back again. And so it's a bubble going through. And the fact of the matter is, at the same time, we added another teacher to every single upper grade house. There are five teachers with that special educator on all the upper grade houses.
Yeah, but still, the classes are too large.
Yeah, and hindsight's twenty-twenty. I'd say we should have done that, we should have just said, we're gonna move a three-four teacher, we're gonna have him follow this class and we're done.
I totally get that and I'm not, I really don't want to focus on what we should have done, I'm more, I'm more wanna focus about what we can do right now. And, and I don't know, I just, I just want, I really, really think we owe this to the teachers and to the children.
So we added a second math teacher in every single math class?
So, so at the, just, let's just understand that this is a time for comment, we really can't discuss right now because it's not on the agenda. Just understand, I just want to understand that, and so I, I think it's, uh, it's good that you've brought it up. My only comment on it, and then we should probably move on, is that for better or worse, we're, we have attempted to, you know, remedy the situation with some recent changes that we've made. Not that necessarily it was the best way we could have gone about it, but we're not ignoring the issue.
I, understood, I just wanna make sure that we do what needs to be done, obviously for next year, because this problem will continue.
Well, that's, that's where we need to take it up in the budget, we really do.
And to really think hard creatively to see if we can do something this year.
Yeah, truthfully, I don't, um, it's just a comment, um, I have done this before. Even in the summer, when late in the summer, also we realized class sizes were, were too large. We could not pull it off and balance the classes at the same time because we couldn't get parent cooperation. And so only certain kids could be moved because we couldn't get people to go along with it and it unbalanced the classes. And you're talking about shifting up two different classes at the same time, which would, and one of them is the first year they're in school. That's gonna be an incredibly sensitive issue if we move the kindergarten kids around all of a sudden and put more kids in every class. Yeah, that's what's gonna happen. And I understand, I, you know, I agree with what you're trying to do, I think we've tried to attack it in other ways this year with the idea we're gonna solve it next year. We're gonna bring that class size down. And I don't think we have to do it by adding a, a person, I think we can do it by shifting our resources around.
Exactly.
And I agree with that, I do, I just don't know if we can do it right now without causing havoc at the same time.
I'm just concerned that we don't take away from something. We don't, I, let's just not focus on a Band-Aid solution. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Director's Comments? Good. Um, just a couple for me, uh, mostly kudos, I think we've discussed most of them, we've talked about kneecaps. I think it's a great improvement and thanks again to, um, the staff and the teachers and administration. Um, uh, we talked about the community potluck. The only other thing that actually I noticed in your report, uh, that I wanted to just call a kudo out is to, um, uh, your report about, uh, uh, Kim Rodliff being, uh, recognized as, uh, one of UVM's Teachers of the Year recognition. So that's gonna be coming up, uh, soon, I believe, right? Like next, this week or next? So that's great, just wanted to put that out into the public record, congratulations to her. And she's a one-two teacher, by the way, if you didn't know.
I was in, in, um, I volunteered in her math class last year. Yeah, she's pretty incredible.
Great, good to hear, and it's good to hear that she's getting recognized for it. So that's all I had for Director's Comments myself, if anyone else doesn't have any, we can move on. And that would be, uh, a motion needed to go into executive session to discuss negotiations.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.